You guys ready?
Stand to be away from us this long?
I think so. Okay, I'll call the order Spark City Council Meeting of nine-nine-two thousand nineteen with a roll call, please.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Council members Abbott.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Bybee.
Here.
Dare.
Here.
Acting City Attorney McCormick. City Manager Croods.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Okay, if you all stand for our invocation speaker today would be Pastor Christopher Dare.
Let's just have water prayer. Lord, we come here, we thank you for today. We do lift up our city, we lift up our staff and all the people who are running it. But I pray for our fire right now. I know there's smoke outside. We said we have firemen all over the place working hard. And we pray for safety and pray that they're safe as well. We, the police, Lord, put their life on the line every day. But I pray for the decisions made right here. Or that we take our time, move slow, make sure we are smart about what we're doing, but and wise and making sure we look to the future. Be with us here today, please, with our mayor as he continues to continue to help here and help here and guide us in every step. In your name we pray. Amen?
Amen, thank you. If you remain standing, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Bybee, would you lead us, please?
Yes, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're gonna catch up one of them.
He throws me off every time. He couldn't remember the third line.
I've done that before. Okay, public comment. I'll open up the public comment period. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak at this time, would you please fill out a card? Our first speaker is Marcy Cooper-Smith. Welcome, fresh off of the Senior Fest.
It's where I live.
That's right. And proud of it.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Spark City Council members. My name is Marcy Cooper-Smith and I'm the Secretary for the Spark Senior Citizen Advisory Committee. And with me is...
I'm LaMaren Kozelowski and I'm Chairman of the Spark Senior Advisory Committee. Thank you for having us.
And we just want to be here to thank you for your continued support of seniors. You all showed up in force at the Sparks, at the Senior Fest, which was held last week. And for the first time, we had a table there, our Spark Senior Citizen Advisory Committee. And everybody commented, "Did you see all the Spark City Council members here? Did you see the mayor from Sparks was here?" It did not go unnoticed that you were all there. And we also would like to thank both the Sparks Police and the Sparks Fire Departments for the wonderful handouts they gave us. The Sparks Senior Phone Patrol Program for the, for the police literally flew off our tables. Everybody was interested in it and we had several residents who said they participated. And quite a few Reno seniors said, "Why can't Reno have something like this?" As far as the Sparks Fire Department, the Safe Program, they gave us handouts for making sure your smoke alarm works and how to evacuate from your home, how you can practice doing a drill. Those flew off the table. So, we ran out of supplies. It was just great and we just really continue to thank you for your continued support of seniors and your always being available to us.
Yes, and I'd just like to say thank you. I came from another meeting, so that's why I'm kind of rushed. But thank you so much, we really appreciate it. We have some great goals, I think we're gonna do good. I think we're going to make a lot of, I hope, a lot of difference in this town. And I've been here a long time, so the difference is gonna be good. Thank you again.
I think you're, you're already making a difference, trust me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next speaker is Christine Thompson. Going down, Christine, welcome. How are you?
I'm well, thank you.
Good.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council Members. I'm Christine Thompson, I'm Community Programs Manager at Nevada Cancer Coalition. My colleague Kelly Gately Seals at the Washoe County Health District will be presenting a special award to the council in just a short time to celebrate the council's progressive initiative in passing smoke and vape-free ordinance for the City of Sparks Parks and Recreation and Outdoor Spaces and Open Trails. Our organization, I don't mean to steal her thunder, but I wanted to have this opportunity to speak because our organization applauds the Spark City Council for this, for protecting the health of Sparks residents and visitors to your parks. We applaud the important collaboration that occurred between your council, the City of Reno, and Washoe County, so that smoke and vape-free parks are a reality across the Truckee Meadows community and all the way throughout the community. I had the privilege of being the quote-unquote "public representative" at many of the Smoke-Free Parks Task Force meetings during the nearly two-year-long process of bringing this healthy initiative to fruition. I wanted to take a moment to particularly recognize and thank Council Member Donald Abbott for his contributions to Parks Commissioner Andrea Taverner for their leadership in supporting this initiative and moving it forward. And I also wanted to recognize the incredible leadership of your Parks and Recreation Director, Tracy Dominguez. Without her initiative, her careful, thoughtful, always pragmatic, always professional approach, this important public policy initiative may well have languished. We are grateful to her, we are grateful to all of you for helping ensure that our public is safe from the exposure to the toxic effects of secondhand smoke and we thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, Christine. Anybody else in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Move on to number five, approval of the agenda. Looking for a motion? Mr. Abbott? Okay, we have a motion, looking for a second. Mr. Dare?
I moved to give a second. But I moved.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, six, consideration and possible approval of the minutes of the Spark City Council Meeting for August twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen. Do you want to pull any, any portion of it, change it? Ms. Bybee?
I move to approve the minutes of the Spark City Council Meeting for August twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen as presented.
Okay, motion, looking for a second, Mr. Lawson?
It's catching on.
Oh, no, there we go. That's right. Okay, we have a motion and a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, we'll move on to number seven, announcements, presentations, recognition items, and items of special interest. Today at seven point one, a presentation of the Washoe County District Board of Health Extra Mile Award to the City of Sparks. Kelly, come on down. Thanks for being here today.
Hello, good afternoon. Again, thank you for having me. My name is Kelly Gately Seals, I'm from the Washoe County Health District. And we have a award that we have been giving since two thousand and nine. It's called the Extra Mile Award. And it's an award that recognizes businesses, organizations, and entities that go above and beyond what is the Nevada required per the Nevada Clean Indoor Air Act. As you remember, in two thousand and six, we passed a law here in Nevada that limits smoking in indoor places of employment. And this award helps recognize those entities that go beyond that. And as Christine gave a great introduction, the City of Sparks voting to move forward with the ordinance to implement the smoke-free, vape-free parks is a great example of that. We want to recognize your leadership and, as Christine mentioned, those representatives on the council with the Parks and Rec Department, working together as the task force in the regional efforts to move it forward, was a fantastic example of working together as a region for a quality public health measure in our community. I'd like to remind you of some of the surveys that were done and the community support that this effort had. City of Sparks had a survey, as well as the Truckee Meadows Parks Foundation, both which showed overwhelming support for these efforts. We also got some feedback related to health reasons, environmental reasons for why people supported this. And I'd like to share a little bit of information about a recent survey that we took here in our area, just this past July, that asked people why they support smoke-free outdoor events. So, just a handful of comments, and again, the folks that are supportive. "I have asthma that is triggered by smoke. I used to smoke and being around it is hard." "Our son is on oxygen." "I have lung disease." So, I recognize a lot of times, and I got some of those phone calls too, people not being happy about this. But when we look at the community support and the people that this impacts, it really is a huge public health gain. Records have not been updated since two thousand and seventeen, but as of October two thousand and seventeen, there were over fifteen hundred jurisdictions that had passed smoke-free parks. So, we are joining a wide group of, of communities across the nation that have done this. And so, on behalf of the Washoe County Health District and the Chronic Disease Prevention Program, it's our honor to prevent, to present the City of Sparks City Council with an Extra Mile Award. And it reads, "The two thousand and nineteen Extra Mile Award is presented to the Spark City Council for adopting smoke-free, vape-free parks and protecting those who use our region's parks, trails, and open spaces from the dangers of secondhand smoke." So, again, thank you for providing smoke-free environments for our residents, families, and visitors.
Thank you. Now, I'm gonna have Christopher Dare represent us on the Board of Health, we'll have him accept the award. And we'll get a picture.
And I'll, I'll leave the box for you, it has the hanging mechanism inside the box, so.
Thank you for that award. I believe we were the first entity to pass that, too.
We were the first entity.
Thank you, Tracy. Okay. Move on, next presentation, seven point two, Presentation of Sparks Heritage, Heritage Museum, two thousand and nineteen Annual Report. Welcome, Richard.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council Members. Tracy Dominguez, Parks and Recreation Director. I'm simply here today to introduce you to Dr. Richard Simmons, who is the President of the Museum Board, and he's here to give you the annual presentation for the museum. Thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Modern technology. Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, Council Members, ladies and gentlemen, I really appreciate this opportunity to present this to you. We've had a good year, challenging year, and we'll talk a little bit about that. We do appreciate this opportunity. I also want to recognize Mr. Dominguez' help in revising our PowerPoint. She did a marvelous job. My first inclination, I was told that we were gonna do this, was, oh boy, another bureaucrat. But she absolutely did a marvelous and amazing job, and we certainly appreciate that very, very much. The next two slides relate to the, where am I? Relate to our budget and our assets. And I have, these are condensed in the slides, I have available for you on paper, details, if you wish to have them. And I gave them to the city clerk earlier today, so you can see the exact breakdown. But essentially, our assets and liabilities, equity, is about quarter of a million dollars. And that's primarily the exhibit materials that we have. And the, one of the things I always hesitate to point out, but it's something that's important. What you see in the museum itself is probably twenty percent of what we have in storage. And we try to rotate exhibits so that it's different when people come at different times. But we're financially, we're in pretty good shape. Our budget for this year, coming year, is forty-seven thousand, and that's total budget of outlays. Last, this past year, we spent about forty-three thousand, seven hundred dollars. So, we think the, well, let me back up there. We think the forty-seven thousand is a recent, reasonable expectation. I'll get this straight in a minute. This is where we get our revenues. Admissions, gift shop, facility rentals, membership dues, and contributions are our two biggest chunks. We do charge for some of the seminars, particularly if you're not a member of the museum. And of course, we have our license plate program. I skipped over seminars, bus tours, and presentations. Unfortunately, bus tours may be a matter of the past. The gentleman who leads or led the bus tours has some physical disabilities and probably will not be doing it any longer. And that's, to me, a tragedy, because he, many of, if I use his name, I'm not going to, many of you wouldn't know him, very eminent historian from our local school district. We have the license plate program, and that's something that we would like to have a lot more of. Later on in the presentation, I think we're, we are up to about a hundred and seventy-nine plates. And we really would have liked to reach the thousand. Goal, which would have allowed us to continue to receive those funds in regards to the plates. If we do not reach that goal, the plates that are currently in issue, have been issued, as long as the, the people who own the vehicles renew it each year, we will continue to get the portion of that license fee. So, hopefully, the hundred and seventy-nine people who've got the plates up to now will continue to use them in future years, continue to renew them. And then miscellaneous expenditures, about sixty-five hundred. Our first Saturday lectures have been reasonably successful. Occasionally, we'll have, like this past Saturday, we had an excellent presentation by Jim Bonar on the Lincoln Highway, and we had seven people show up. And that's not only our advertising, but their own organization's advertising, so I'm not sure whether it's other commitments people had on that day or not, that was a little disappointing. I'd say our average is around thirty to forty. So, that's pretty good, I think. The outdoor photography was one, had a gentleman who discussed how you take good pictures outdoor. Of course, the, There's No Lake on Lake Street, that was presented by one of our board members. And then the Lincoln Highway. We've actually had three different presentations about the Lincoln Highway over the past year. With the exception of the one this past Saturday, which were all well-attended. Twenty eighteen, nineteen activities, again, the first lecture series. We had about, on Harold's Club, we had the Director of the Keck Museum at UNR speak to us, commemorating the history of the Fourth Street and Prater Way, One Truckee Weet River. And it sort of seems out of place to many people, maybe even those in the audience today. Why are we celebrating Apollo eleven's historic landing on the moon? And I hope you all know the Sparks role in the space program. Rocketdyne, the company that was testing rockets here in the nineteen sixties into the nineteen seventies. About eighty percent of the rocket technology it took us to the moon and back was tested here in Sparks. And in addition, the individual rockets that landed us on the moon and took us off from the moon were tested here in Sparks before being sent to the Cape to be integrated into the spacecraft. So, Sparks had a very critical part in the space program, and this was the fiftieth anniversary of the historic landing.
We apologize.
I think it's a great picture.
Now you see what, now, that's what, now you see what we deal with on a daily basis.
We're very pleased to have one of your members on our board. So, we thought we could take a little bit of graphic liberties. But these are some of the other activities, Sierra Color Wars, or Color Society Art Exhibit, we've actually had three of these this past year. During the Tweed Bicycle Day, we held a reception for the Tweed participants at the museum. And Pumpkin Palooza, we had four hundred and seventeen museum visitors and one thousand four hundred and eighty-six train visits during that day. And then we have a group called the Swing Dance Group, and they have rented our facility on a relatively regular monthly basis, although I've been informed they may have outgrown us. So, we may not have that for the next year. And of course, we always provide the museum for pictures of Santa up on the second floor, that's very popular. Unfortunately, we were not able to enter the Christmas Parade this past year. Unfortunately for us, fortunately for Granite Construction, they're so busy, they didn't have a trailer that they could use, and they didn't have the manpower to build the exhibit for us. Since we won prizes the previous three years, that was unfortunate, because I think we would have done it again. Rotary's had events there, we've had private memorials. Scott Carey has done an excellent walk-in tour of downtown Sparks. And he starts at the museum and then goes down the street. And then kind of, of course, we've been involved with our town event in Sparks, including Eileen Fuller, Eileen Fuller, Slidamar Club and Spark the Imagination. These are where people come from. Totals, the numbers in there, totals about eighty-five percent, I don't remember the exact percentage. It does not equal a hundred percent, because our guest register, from which we derive these data, it's voluntary for the visitors to fill out. So, if they, we, our reception desk volunteers usually ask, "Did you fill it out?" And most people respond, "Do it," but not everybody. So, roughly, probably twen, twelve percent, we don't capture. But it's still pretty good. Mostly Nevada, California, other states, you can see here about fifteen percent. Reno, Sparks, California. Not USA, I was surprised, it was only two percent of the total number, or two-tenths of a percent. I thought it would have been more, because usually we stop and talk to these people and what brought them to the country and stuff like that. Last chance, Joe, thank goodness. His restoration is complete. As most of you know, I hope, we've established a restricted fund with the community foundation for donations for his continued maintenance. We're estimating probably every three to four years, he may have to be repainted, because he's in full sunlight now. When he was on the Nugget in the old days, he was shaded by the building. So, that, that was probably very good. License plate sales, I've already covered that. Volunteers Joan Howard and Pam Lombardi have kept Glendale Schoolhouse open on a more consistent basis, and they still plan to do that for the coming year. But one of our board members and myself and our manager attended the roadmap training, which was offered by the City of Sparks, and I think will contribute to ultimately, hopefully, we can come up with some better fundraising events and concepts. It was very successful from my point of view. There's Pam. Difficult to recruit, train, and retain volunteers. This is gonna be one of our biggest efforts for the next year, we've got to get more volunteers. Somewhere on one of the slides, the volunteer hours, you will see a reduced, or the number of volunteers has been reduced by about ten percent from previous years. And this is due to attrition. Attrition may be people who are no longer physically able to participate, some have deceased. And we have, right now, we've got two new volunteers who are under forty. And so, it's, it's a lot of senior citizens and put in a lot of hours. And again, we're gonna try to increase our fundraising activities, and we need to develop a long-range business and operations plan. We've had some, probably not very successful, but we keep trying. These are our volunteers, as I indicate, we're down to thirty-two this year. And at four thousand two hundred and ninety-five hours donated in fiscal nineteen, that's probably ten to twenty percent too low. Because a number of the board members contribute a lot of hours that they forget to log, myself included. Yeah, we're doing a project, we start at home, and we put fourteen hours in at home, we forget to log it. And then Fred Horlacher, who's led our bus tours to historical points of interest, and this has probably been his last year. Train, the Bison Centennial Train Exhibit, Rich, Rick Peterson, another one of our volunteers, means a weekly, does a weekly training, just as reliable as he can be, inside of the train. He doesn't touch the outside. As I said, last year, we had about four thousand ninety-four visitors, now this is at the train, of which six hundred and sixty-eight were on school tours, scout tours, or children with adults, all were free. Our main conductor, who conducts the tours, Dick Drylon is sitting over here, and we couldn't do it without him. As, I'm sure most of you have seen him in his conductor's uniform, and he does a superb job. If anybody asks me a question about the train and Dick's anywhere around, I say, "Ask Dick," because he knows it from one end to the other. That's him there, of course. We did twelve school class tours, as I indicated in the numbers, we did Cub Scout Pack, united several policy, ninety-one participants. Seniors, born and retired, star retirement community, nine participants. I think that may, should have been nine events, because they've, they've come roughly two or three times a month. And it's been very successful. It can be exciting. We had one of the participants, one of the residents go out the emergency exit, which sounds the alarm. So, that, it does get exciting sometimes. Just Kid and Learning Center Field Trip, Child's World, and seniors, it's more our Two Life Group, we had three separate tours of that group. And the, those tours are all free. Although I must admit, a couple of the nonprofits donate, but, but we don't set a fee. So, here we go, where are we gonna go from now? We've got to try and recruit more volunteers. We're working very hard on that, as I say, we've had, just in the last couple of weeks, two more. We're gonna have to continue our efforts to increase community awareness, I hate to say it, but I think we're the best secret in Sparks. And yet, that's with all the advertising we do. We're, we're in the R N R, or the Free Newspaper, we're in the, what's the one for Tribune, we're in the Tribune. We have a very good website. I actually discovered by accident about three weeks ago, a website called Nine, Nine Special Things You Should Do in Sparks. And we were listed on that. We didn't even know we were listed on that. So, it wasn't something we did. So, it's not that we're not trying, we're not getting the word out there. We're gonna try to increase the diversity of the educational activities and the events we have up in the cultural center. We're trying, our executive director, or excuse me, our manager and one of our other board members is working very hard to develop a narrative explanations for each of the exhibits. We've had some labels in the past, but we're trying to do more narration so people get a better feeling for Northern Nevada and Sparks history. And again, we're gonna try to continue our efforts to expand fundraising strategies to support operations. And we thank you for your continued support. The city's been a big partner, it's a very valued partner, and we certainly appreciate it. And we couldn't do it without you. And so, we hopefully, this thirty-year-plus association can continue. And I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions or comments for the doctor?
Okay, any questions or comments for the doctor? Doctor, I have one. Most of your, if not all of your items in the museum are donated, isn't it? Is that correct?
As far as I know, they all are.
Okay. Do you guys ever put a value on the stock you have there? Because there is a value to it.
There is a value, but we also found out what it would cost to inventory the whole thing. And so we tried to put an estimated value, since I've been involved, on things that we've accessed in the recent history. But we haven't gone back and put them on some of the ones that have been in the, well, we're 30 years old, so some of those items, we don't even know where they came from back in the days. But I would love to be able to afford to have a, you know, some legitimate estimator come in and give us a really valuable, I'm guessing, probably within the half million-dollar range at least. At least what I see on Antique Roadshow.
I think maybe one of these days it should be done, just because if you have an accident down there or anything, at least you know the value of what you may lose.
I think it would be a great idea, if nothing else, for fire insurance.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
If you know anybody's got a big check, let me know.
I think Paul? You have a big check? O'Donnell?
Sorry.
Thank you, doctor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We do appreciate everything.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We're going to go 7.3, Washoe County School District, Pathway to Positive Progress. We have Katie and Kristen.
Me too.
They're two K's. Come on down. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, City Manager Crutts, Kristen McNeil, Interim Superintendent for the Washoe County School District. Alongside of me, I have President Katie Simon-Holland with our school board. And we're here to just tell you some good things that are happening within our school district, and to also thank you so much for all of your support. So just to get started off of the bat, we started on a very positive note on August 12th in our school district. We are the 59th largest school district in the United States. We have just over 64,032 students as of last Friday, and hopefully more are coming soon. We have 107 schools now. Our students from early childhood through adult education are working side by side with more than 4,600 teachers, a total of 8,000 employees, that include bus drivers, nutrition services, teacher aides and assistants, central support, counselors, administrators, facilities, and many different other types of positions. The good news is, is our graduation rate is increasing. As you all know, we had an 84% graduation rate last year, and we have all indicators that it's going to be increasing even more. But you'll have to wait until October for that. We are closing the achievement gap for many subgroups of students, English language learners, students with individualized education plans, students in poverty, Latino students, American Indian students, all of our subgroups are increasing. This is a historic year for our district, as we opened three brand-new schools. For the first day of school on August 12th, we opened Nick Poliquitas Elementary School in South Reno, Desert Skies Middle School in Sun Valley, and Sky Ranch Middle School in Spanish Springs, all thanks to the result of the passage of WC-1 in 2016. We are grateful to the voters of Washoe County, who all approved this measure. Since WC-1 passed, we've been able to carry out extensive and long overdue renovations, as you all know, in many of our older school buildings, and build three new schools that I just mentioned. More good news is on the horizon. Construction of John C. Bowhatch Elementary School, next door to Sky Ranch Middle School, is well underway. And I know many of you have attended our recent ribbon cuttings and groundbreaking ceremonies, and we are grateful very much for your support. Construction at Marcy Hers Middle School in the Arrow Creek area is also coming along very smoothly. These schools will open their doors to students next fall. In addition, we are scheduled to open a new elementary school in Cold Springs in the fall of 2021. Three new schools, or excuse me, the new school at Wild Creek will open the following year in 2022, and you all are very familiar with that one. And the newly repurposed Career and Technical Education, or CTE, school, where Hug High School sits now, and the campus, will open in 2023. Naming submissions for those two schools will be accepted until September 15th, and we truly deeply appreciate all the support and efforts of the City of Sparks and all of you with our high school at Wild Creek. Our CTE, again, career technical education programs are robust and preparing our students for the workforce of tomorrow. We offer, if you didn't know, 39 CTE programs throughout our school district, with 7,500 students earning CTE credits and enrolled in a CTE course. 98% of our students who complete a CTE program graduate on time. 50% of our CTE graduates earn an honors or advanced diploma. CTE students are passing AP, Advanced Placement Scores are 31.8%, compared to the national average of 23.5%. Robotics teams are in 19 elementary, nine middle, and 13 of our high schools. Community partnerships such as Tesla and the Nevada Arts Council, our eighth-grade career expo, which is coming up, with local businesses, industries, and higher education. We also offer internship programs with all of our local companies. Signature academies in all of our comprehensive high schools focus on biomedical, engineering, manufacturing, the arts, web design, energy, technology, and the international baccalaureate program at Booster High School. We also offer dual-credit programs through Truckee Meadows Community College. And we are also here to tell you how much we truly appreciate your partnership with the City of Sparks. Myself as a former principal at Marvin Moss, Go Marmots, from attending our groundbreaking ceremonies, helping deliver donuts for Teacher Appreciation Week, as we all work together to provide safe and learning environments and living environments for our students and their families. From community sports for youth, kids out-of-school programs for parks, snow removal, law enforcement, fire, safety and traffic, road safety, we're all in this together. We recognize the response of all of you when you conducted a study of pedestrian and vehicle traffic on Bering Boulevard, that led to the installation of two rectangular rapid-flashing beacons in front of Reed High School after the tragic death of a student. We know that you, as all of you, are concerned about student safety, just as we are. And we truly appreciate and give you many thanks for your role in to make sure that this great safety measure was put into place so quickly. I'm working closely with our entire district family, our students and their families, as we move ahead in our mission to prepare every one of our 64,032 students for the 21st century. As an important part of this effort, I've mapped out our Pathway to Positive Progress, and I have a copy for all of you. We've held a number of staff meetings and community meetings. The most recent one is going to be this afternoon at North Alley's High School at 4:30 in the Career Center. And the plan is a roadmap that builds upon the good things that we're doing in the Washoe County School District. The basis of this plan is open and honest communication, which is vitally important to all of our employees. I've spent a lot of time talking with staff, students, and our families, and members of our community to gain their feedback, and just listen and learn about their concerns and answer their questions. It also addresses staff concerns, such as teacher and principal workload, employee morale, special education and teacher support, class sizes, allocations, and technology support for all of our schools. Our district has faced some challenges in the time, but we know that it's up to all of us to move positively forward, and we are doing just that. I look forward to our continuing partnership altogether as we move forward. And now I'd like to present President Katie Simon-Holland, who would like to share some more information with all of you.
Thank you, Kristen, Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. Manager, Katie Simon-Holland for the record. It's a pleasure to be here in this role. This is the first time I've been before you in this role, so it's always good to see our friends in Sparks. And I wanted to talk about just three parts of our elements of positive progress this year. First, I want to talk about the budget. Second, I want to talk about school safety. And third, I want to talk about our superintendent search, because we hope that she'll be involved in that. First of all, with our budget, you might have seen that this was our first structurally-balanced budget in 14 years. We set a goal three years ago to have a balanced budget within three years, and we did it. Certainly much thanks to the legislature and the governor, who helped support additional funding for us. But it was also thanks to the tremendous amount of work that's been done by our staff. Over the past three years, we've cut $63 million in ongoing expenditures in order to be able to have a balanced budget. That's a huge, dramatic cut, and the majority of those cuts came from central administration, which you would expect. We wanted to keep the cuts as far away from the classroom as we could, but in many cases, of course, we had to increase class sizes two years ago, and we have not done that since. But we often hear that, gee, the school district is top-heavy. Well, we actually have 28% fewer administrators per student than the national average, and we're lower in administrators per student than the state average. Our administrators are paid less than the state and national averages, and our teachers are paid on average less than the state and national averages. But we're working hard to fix that. We did budget for the 3% increase for staff that the governor requested, and of course, that's a negotiated item, so we're negotiating that with our employees right now. Part of the reason we were able to reduce some of those expenditures is that we implemented what is in the Government Finance Officers Association Public Sector Budgeting Best Practice nationally, which is priority-based budgeting. We're the first school district in the United States to implement that program. It's been quite a journey, not without its ups and downs, and we've learned a lot, but setting priorities for what the community wants us to be investing most in has been really important to us. This year's budget for the current fiscal year is about $495 million. And that's just the general fund. We have another almost $500 million in construction program. So the school district is now almost a billion-dollar enterprise, and it is, it's daunting to think of. And as Kristen said, with 8,000 employees, we are one of the largest employers in the region. Our budget comes from several sources, and surprisingly, a lot of folks think that naturally school districts must be funded primarily from property taxes. Well, they're not in Nevada. We are funded about 22% from local property taxes, about 24% from the revenues we receive from the state, and then about 41% from the local school support tax, which is a sales tax derivative, and the balance from federal and other funds. Our per pupil funding, which is the state funding that has been of such great debate over so many years in Nevada, Nevada still ranks 50th in the nation for school finance, for school funding, but that's as of prior to the last legislative session. So we hope we'll move up a little bit. We get about $6,034 per pupil. And the legislature, in fact, did its own study in 2018 and said it would cost about $9,200 to educate a student in Nevada. So we're grateful for the increases that have occurred, and we, as a state and a nation, as a state and a community, still need to keep moving forward to make sure that funding for education works. But as Kristen said, we're doing great things. We are in the, you know, New York Times ranked us in the top 18% of school districts nationwide. Niche.com recently, which is a Realtor, it's a resource for Realtors to tell people about the school districts for their clients, ranked us in the top 22% of school districts nationwide. And Education Week, just last week, announced that Nevada has risen now for academic achievement to 35th out of the 50 states, and had been at 48, 49, 50. We're now 35th in academic achievement, so, and we were also the most improved state in the nation. So that's, there's a lot of good news happening there. Want to talk a little bit about school safety. We just got word that we received a grant that we had applied for, again, legislative program that the state is funding and we are very grateful for, that will allow us to put a school police officer in every single middle school in the years to come. We have school police officers, as you know, in every high school, but as we all recognize, middle school is becoming the hotbed of where we're having challenges that we need to address. So we will have school police officers in every middle school. We currently have single point of entry in every single elementary school and every middle school now. And we've implemented computerized visitor management systems in all of our elementary schools and in the new schools as we're building them. There is a very controlled entry, and I know some of you have been on the tour to see Desert Skies and Sky Ranch, where you have to actually push a button to get in after school starts, and your picture is taken, and your ID is checked to get into the school. So we're doing a lot on school safety, which we're very proud of. We'll also be implementing additional social workers throughout the district as a result of that grant, so we're very excited about that. We know that school safety has many, many elements, but one of the elements, of course, is physical infrastructure, and with WC-1, we've been able to really enhance our school safety infrastructure. And we know that another piece of the, of the school safety program is mental health and social services. So our social workers are very important to us. On our, on our superintendent search, I wanted to let you know that, and with interim superintendent McNeil's also endorsement, we are having an open competitive search. The board voted to have an open competitive search for our next superintendent. I will say that, you know, our emails from the public are about 50/50. 50% of the people say, you know, "What are you thinking? You should hire somebody who's local. Don't waste your money on a national search." And about half of the people say, "You people would be incompetent if you didn't have an open competitive search." We all agree that certainly it would be wonderful to find somebody locally that is the best qualified candidate for our superintendent of schools. And we also want whoever is selected to know that they were the person that was the most qualified. If you don't have that open competitive search, there's always that cloud of, gosh, could we have found somebody, you know, better or different to do this? Dr. McNeil has not yet told me, and I'm trying to pry it out of her, whether she's going to be a candidate or not. We're very, very happy for the work that she's doing and really grateful for what she's doing. We intend to have a very transparent, very inclusive process for looking for our next superintendent. We will welcome community input, public input, families, students, staff. We're very interested in having this be a very inclusive and very open process, so be listening for more on that. We're going to be evaluating and selecting a consultant firm to help us, or more than one firm. We recognize that finding the national network of people who are the best in the business to do this may be more of a national consulting firm role, but getting the public input and knowing our community is more of a local firm role. So we have encouraged proposers to collaborate and make sure that we get the best possible result from our superintendent search process. And we have made a commitment that that new superintendent will be in place for the next school year. As Councilman Dare knows, you can't really hire superintendents in the middle of the year. You know, people are on contracts, you have to sort of pace it so that, we'll be going through this process now, hopefully have someone selected in the spring, and then ready to have them get to work next summer. So we'd be happy to answer any questions, and again, we're so grateful for the support and partnership that we feel with the City of Sparks.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Mr. Dare?
I want to thank you for coming, and I would encourage you to come more often. And I say that, I know we've talked a little bit, but I just want to officially say out there that I think the more that we can all walk together, the schools we have and across the region, not just in Sparks, are very valuable to all of us, we care about the region, but especially in Sparks. It's one of those things that we've been handed, that, but sometimes it, and we just need to make sure we feel that we can actually be a part of that, and we want to be. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Byamy?
Thank you very much for coming and giving us an update, and some of us, depending on our other commissions and boards we sit on, probably are well aware, but it's always good to remind us what is happening, what progress has been made, where we still have to go, and also for the community at large to know. And I appreciate that. Can you remind us, I know you started some community conversations that you're holding, and can you give us some dates and when those are going to be happening so that all of us and then people who are watching this on Facebook Live or check this out later, we'll have that information?
I don't have the dates right at the top of my head, but I do know, so we had one at Sparks Library last week, we had one at, was it Demone?
McQueen.
McQueen High School. All of them are running together. But we will definitely, and I'm going to hand you copies of our pathway, and there's actually a link that the community can go on there and get those dates, and it's right on our website, but I will absolutely- on our website, but I will absolutely make sure that you all get those dates, because we'd love to have you all out there and the public out there.
Okay. Can you remind us again, the web, your website address for people to get more info?
Washoe County Schools.net.
Nope, nope. Washoe Schools.
Washoe Schools.
Dot net.
Washoe Schools.net.
Washoe Schools.net.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, may I just thank Ms. Bybee for serving on the Capital Funding Protection Committee? Is anyone else on the capital funding? Mr. Anderson, thank you as well. We were, and Mr. Dare, we were remiss in not thanking you for that service, because that is a huge amount of work, and it's so, so critical to our ability to move forward as rapidly as we have been, so thank you for that service as well.
I think I was on it when I was first elected, but nobody ever met because you didn't have any money. Does that sound about right?
That's about how it works, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And also, Councilwoman, thank you for sitting on our Safe and Healthy Schools Commission as well, so I appreciate that very much.
Thank you for coming, and seriously, we would like to get a report maybe twice a year if it's not too much trouble, and keep us, keep us up to date, because everybody always calls us about the schools, and we go Washoe County School District. So we, we don't have a lot of say with what they do, but we sure appreciate what you do.
Well, thank you so much, and we will definitely make sure that you all get those dates, and I'll pass this out to your clerk as well.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
Thanks so, so much.
Bill, do it, Bill, do it. Come on, Bill.
Get down. Okay, 7.4 presentation from Edon, and Mr. Kazmierski, welcome. How you doing, Mike?
Great. Mayor, council members? Let's see if I can get this thing up and running. First of all, thanks to Mayor, council members, for, for all the things you do for our region, not just for the city of Sparks. I know you're, you're representing Sparks, but you have a regional perspective that really makes a difference, because we all really do live in a region, you know. I've probably talked to all of you about this. A new company executive drives from Sparks, Reno into Washoe County and back, and has no idea of the districts and the representation that they just drove through, because we are a region. From an economic development perspective, we work together as a region, and I think you really get that, and I want to thank you for that. A special thanks to Neil and the staff. Working with the staff has been a real pleasure. Helping the companies, helping the companies see what's here, helping them grow, helping them be successful is a team effort, and I can tell you that your staff is really an important part of our team as far as we're concerned. What I'm going to do is give you just a quick update. You've seen a lot of this before, so I'm not going to dwell on it. If you're, if you want any specific detail, I always enjoy our one-on-ones when we have a chance to do that, dig, dig down deep on areas that you may have interest. Also, if you have questions as we go through here, just stop me. You've seen many of these slides before. This is updated information, so I'll really focus on some of the changes that we're looking at. Again, you know we're a nonprofit. A lot of people don't realize that. We work as a regional development authority. We don't work for any one entity. We work collectively, and that's really important. The state contracts us to represent this region, and we have a community board, and Councilmember Bybee is, is your representative on that board, and has been a very important part of our team there. You've seen the stool before. Again, we focus on attracting great companies, retaining the ones that are here, and helping the entrepreneurial ecosystem be successful. We've added workforce development, community development, because that has become more important now that we've pretty much achieved full employment. Our priorities for 2019, I think we've talked about this many times, but it's about higher-paying jobs, people that can come into the community and can really up the level of skills in the region. It also gives our existing employees a chance to find better-paying opportunities as they go forward, so that's really important. The entrepreneurial ecosystem is a big part of that, and we do work with the Bay Area because of the technology push we're going on pretty significantly. If you look at our, our, what we say is one of our key metrics on the attraction side, how many companies actually visit? And that has always been an important metric for us, because if you can get them to visit this region, they really, really like what they see. And the community and our partners sell this region very well. If we can get companies to visit, our goal's eight to 10. This past year, we were right around eight. That's a good number for us. You can see, we've kind of been in that zone on and off for years. We started seven years, eight years ago, where we were lucky to get four companies to visit, and then, of course, now by doubling that, we've managed to bring a lot of great companies to the region. Our goal for the past year was 2,250 jobs. We did exceed our goal, but what, what is more important than that is our, our average wage of the companies we worked with and attracted to this region set a record at 72,000. And just think about that. Back in 2016, we were excited to bring in companies at average 36, and now this past year, over 2,000 jobs at 72,000 average wage. So you're really seeing what's happening with that push to bring in the higher-paying jobs. Pending announcements, we continue to see success in the, our pipeline still has activity. It has not dried up. These are just some companies we'll, we'll be announcing shortly, and then companies we're working with now that are looking at our region. When we hit the finals, we have a pretty good shot if they make a decision of actually getting them here. You can see the different areas they've come from or are looking to come from. California is part of it, but not only California. We appeal to, to the national market as well. Of course, our big player is out at the Industrial Center. You'll hear more about Google hopefully in the next few months. Obviously, Tesla continues with the Panasonic partner. Switch continues to grow. They will eventually have the largest data center in the world out there. Sparks is the closest metro area to the Industrial Center, and you have certainly reaped some of the benefits and felt some of the pain of that growth of the industrial park. We see more growth out there. In fact, would not be surprised to see that industrial park double in, in workforce in the next five to 10 years. Epic Reports out. We've talked about this before, but really, the bottom line is it forecasted a continuation of job growth of at least 10,000 in this region over the next five years. Our job growth for our metro area last year was 15,000, or, excuse me, 10,000 a year. This last year, we had 15,000. So it shows you the jobs and the companies are still coming, and it's a pretty exciting environment to be in, but not without some challenges. Here's how it looks on the graph. Our Epic One is there in blue. You can see where we exceeded the Epic One report. We projected Epic Two in green, and our actuals now are red, so we're actually trending a little bit ahead of where we project for Epic Two. And then the Sparks Projects, you're probably familiar with many of these companies. Now Foods, for example, a great company, is on our board, Jim M.E., and we've got some others there. They've been part of our community here and very much a part of what's happening in the region. It's interesting, you can see where they, they've come from, and it's across the country. And we do have Spanish Springs up there, in part because it's now really the closest industrial center to Sparks, and it really will directly affect you. We're seeing growth, a lot of growth now in Spanish Springs, because that is where the most available land is right now. That's the attraction side. Things are going well. Great, great jobs, great opportunity. The retention of the companies we have is really important, and that's the retention piece. It's really important to make sure the companies that are here feel good, and that's why we have Existing Industry Awards Event every October. We certainly encourage you to join us for that. It's kind of an award ceremony to say, hey, you guys that have been here, you may not have been in the paper with the governor like these new companies, but you're really important. You've been here for a long time. You've made a difference, and so recognizing our existing industry is important, supporting them, going out and visiting them. We, we help solve their problems. We get them to the right resources. At, at the end of the day, it's about helping companies not just only succeed here, but grow here, the existing companies. And then, obviously, with our success of reducing our unemployment, we've caused a problem in that we are running out of talent, and you might even see that when you're hiring for positions within the city. It's hard to find a person of the right qualifications that's willing to work at the wages you're used to paying them. Wages are going up across the board, but we still have a few unemployed. On the retention-expansion team, their top priority now is workforce development and workforce attraction. How do we take the talent we have and upgrade their skills so they can fill these great jobs that are coming to our region? This is our plan, the four key components we work on. The first three, retention, connection, and training. We work with a lot of our partners. We've rolled out programs. We do connections. We do things to help the existing system work, and then we're also working to attract talent to the region. That causes its own problems, but in some cases, you're attracting talent like the graduates from UNR that will go somewhere else if you don't make the case to stay here in town. So it's not always a new person coming to the region. Oftentimes, it's about keeping the talent you have here and helping them find a great chance to succeed. WorkLivePlayReno.com is a site we've set up that has gotten 10,000, 15,000 hits a month, and it's allowing us to give people a connection to the different components of where you can work, what are, what are great places to live, how can you find a place to live, and then the RSCBA helps us with the play section, what can you do to have fun, and there's plenty of that, too. Our Regional Schools Initiative is to help us connect with the schools in mostly, right now, Northern California. There's a lot of talent coming out of those schools that would love to find a place somewhere near the ski slopes. That just happens to be us. These are the schools, and some of the graduate numbers, you can see for every 5,000 that come out of UNR, there are 45,000 that come out of those schools, and we now have relationships with all of them. We're working with them on job fairs. We're working with their counselors. We're helping those students that graduate understand there are some job opportunities here they may want to look at. And then on the entrepreneurial side, growing the next generation of companies doesn't cost us much as a community, but sets us up for long-term success. The Reno Seed Fund is something we use to help encourage companies get that early-stage money that's really the most important part of the process, gets them on the train so that they have a chance to grow here. Then we have many of the ecosystem, many of the thriving ecosystem organizations there that we work with to help these startups grow. I mentioned the Sieg Capital, helping that new company grow. We did help, we did get some funding to help us with that, and it's been very successful so far. And then finally, we've updated our strategic plan. There's a recent version out. This really is focused on the Fourth Industrial Revolution, the fact that most of the people that are in jobs now will have their jobs radically changed in the next five to 10 years. Maybe not the council, but just about everybody else, because I can tell you, technology, AI, and what's going on internationally is changing how jobs are done and how people are valued. And what that means is many jobs will go away, new jobs will come, and what are we doing to make sure that the people, the community, the incumbent workforce is trained so that they can take advantage of the new opportunities that are coming down the pipeline? And that's really what we base our strategic plan on, emphasis on technology on the attraction side. We want to attract the next generation of jobs, not a company that comes here and then goes away in 10 years, the next generation of jobs. And then we look at entrepreneurial growth that helps us, workforce development, attraction, community development. So with all this, we obviously have some concerns in the community. We, we've talked about this before. Housing is top of the list. We've been slow to respond on the housing side, workforce development, the alternate road, the TRI, and then infrastructure upgrades overall. Affordable housing is a national problem. It's not just our problem. We just happen to feel it a little bit harder. You know, it's a supply and demand issue. We just need more supply, and not the supply we were building 20 years ago. The supply we need in the next 10 years, a different building model. We haven't totally wrapped our head around that one as a community. Again, I mentioned this was a national problem. You can see housing, the completed housing, the red there goes back to 1973. You think how big the population was and what we were building in 1973, and we're well below that nationally. So we just haven't figured this thing out about how do you build more housing units? And you wonder why there's an epidemic on homelessness. And then here's our, our picture locally. You can see before the recession, we had 5,000 to 6,000 housing units going up every year. Since then, we haven't hit, we just barely hit 4,000 last year. So we're finally starting to get back on track, but our, because of our growth and the, and the jobs, we've got a huge gap, and the gap is causing housing prices to go through the roof, rents to go up, homelessness to increase. This clearly is, in my view, our, our top concern as a region. And then finally, the alternate road, route to, to the Industrial Center. We've talked about this for several years. I actually had a conversation with Senator Governor last week, met with the Director of NDOT. We're trying to get more traction on this. Obviously, the lands bill, the regional lands bill will help us move this forward, but this is a fairly easy solution when you look at, as opposed to widening the interstate, which could be, you know, billions or more based on the terrain and everything else. This is a probably a three to $400 million fix that would open up a lot of land for other things like housing and industrial operations and other things that are very important to our continued success as a region. So this is something that we're working on. I know Councilmember Lawson has been the lead, and we've worked on this in many ways to get this thing forward, and we're making finally some pretty good traction, it looks like, at least on the lands bill. And then community development initiatives we've been involved in, and certainly the school, school infrastructure. WC-1 was one of our priorities. Hard to believe, three years ago, we finally put together the Save Our Schools Initiative and, and got that passed, so it's exciting to hear about the school district's success and see schools go up, brand-new schools that our kids really deserve. Other areas, arts and culture, I want to thank you all. It looks like just about all of you plan to attend the Arts and Culture Business Luncheon on Thursday, so thank you for that. It really means a lot when the community gets together. Arts and culture is really in our blood. It's part of our, our system, our ecosystem here. It makes us more attractive to the companies we're looking at. It's something we want to promote, and we need to really celebrate our success in that area. That's really what that lunch is about, so thank you for joining us for that. I talked to some of these other, we've got a real, regional trails issue, that's toxic quality of life. We talked about some of the other issues on this list, the flood control piece, which is important, I think, to anyone along the river, and then transitional housing. You, you saw the Sage Street, the Village on Sage Street launch recently, where we got 220 people at about $400 a month into some form of housing. That's the kind of solution that we, really, we need as a region as we move forward. So just some of the things we're working on. I want to thank you, certainly as a, as a key partner. You can see, it's a public-private partnership, a lot of public partners, a lot of private partners. We work together to grow the economy and make things better here, and I open it up for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions or comments? Ms. Bybee.
Mike, thank you for being here and giving us annual update, and, and I just want to say, serving on the Edon Board has been probably one of my favorite commissions to serve on, because the ability to network and to meet so many different partners, the public, the private, new companies coming in, companies who've been here for a while, the art piece, I think it just speaks to our region and to the community that all of us hope to serve on a whole, from the city council level to the governor's Office of Economic Development, to small businesses, big businesses, trails. It's just so all-encompassing, and, and you really get a feeling that it is a team effort, you know, that we're all trying to work and, and address education and workforce and housing, the, all the issues that we all share concerns to make this a better quality of life for our residents, that there's such a big team of people coming all across the board together to do that. So thank you, and thank you to your team. Your staff is amazing, the work they do, and the success that, that I've seen in the three and a half, four years I've been on the board is, is, is great. So thank you, and please extend my thanks to your staff.
Mr. Dare.
Thanks for being here, and good job, and I, I'm really interested in how, what we're going to do with the robotic shift here. I mean, what's your plan? How do we get behind that? How do we get ahead of that? You know, and I don't know, maybe next time you get to come, maybe that would be a really great conversation for us to look, take a step into the future and how, what do we do? So it's, because it's very real, it's very much coming, so, but thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Mike, thanks for coming down today. Always good news coming from Edon. We appreciate the hard work you're doing and looking forward to work with you in the future.
Thank you. We'll see you Thursday.
Thanks, Mike. Okay. 7.45 Boards, Commissions, Vacancy Announcement. Neil, are you doing that?
We have a, a current vacancy to fill a partial term on the Sparks Senior Citizens Advisory Committee. The, the term ends, the current term ends of November 9th of 2020, so that would, between now and then. Persons interested in serving on this committee should complete a community services application available from the city clerk's office or online at www.cityofsparks.us. Once you're there, click on Government on the webpage, then under Boards and Commissions, click Volunteering for a Sparks Board or Commission, then fill out the online form and submit. We will take applications for that position through the end of the day on September 27.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to consent items. Anybody want to pull one? And let me warn you, though, if you do, we won't have any. Looking for a motion. Mr. Anderson.
Move to approve consent item 8.1.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second, Mr. Abbott.
Could I move a second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Move to second.
Passes unanimously. Okay. Move on to General Business 9.1, consideration of possible approval of payment of annual membership dues to the Economic Development Authority of Western Nevada in an amount of $100,000. Doug, welcome, Doug.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Good afternoon. I'm Doug Thornley, Assistant City Manager for Internal Services. Given the light agenda, I thought I'd stretch my legs a little bit and see how long I could talk about your membership dues. I'm here today to recommend that the council spend $100,000 to remain members of the Economic Development Authority of Western Nevada. You just heard Mr. Kazmierski's presentation on what Edon is doing here in the region. Edon is, of course, a coalition of private, private industry and public agencies in the region that are committed to diversifying and expanding the regional economy. Here in Sparks, Edon projects since 2012 have returned an, an annual average of $51,000 in license fees and injected about $36 million a year into the regional economy in the form of gross revenue generated by those businesses. This expenditure has been included in the budget for this fiscal year. City Manager's Office is recommending approval. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions or comments? Ms. Bybee.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
I move to approve payment of the city's membership dues with, with Edon in an amount of $100,000 for fiscal year 2019-2020.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second, Mr. Anderson.
I will second the motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Thornley. We don't have any public hearing and action items, nor do we have any planning or zoning public hearing items, so we'll move on to comments. I'll open it up to the public. Anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Comments from the mayor, city council, and city manager? Any comments? Mr. Anderson.
Sorry, it kept me, uh...
Okay, Mr. Dare.
I just want to invite anybody out there that's interested. The Nevada Veterans Memorial is being built as we speak, and it's pretty exciting. I got to see some pictures today, but if you go down to the Marina, you can see Phase One going in, and it's pretty, pretty exciting to see all that. We've all been working on that very hard, so, good stuff.
Sure is, and I'll mention that our, our fifth annual dinner fundraiser is November the 7th at the Atlantis this year. Any other questions or comments or anybody? Well then, without objection, we are adjourned.